Welcome to the City Council's October 6th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with the City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, we will do roll call. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller is absent. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, our city attorney, our interim city attorney Kara Silver, and our city clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and to members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Just want to echo the welcome to the October 6th City Council Meeting. At this time, we ask that all City Council members remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as respond to any questions of the City Council. For members of the public, when the mayor calls for public comment on each agenda item, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That will alert us that you have a public comment, and you will be able to address the City Council at that time. And that does conclude the information as of now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda, are there any informational items the City Council will be pulling for discussion at the end of the meeting? No? Okay. We'll move on to C, Presentations and Proclamations. Item C1 is a proclamation for Mr. John Pryor. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item C1 regarding the proclamation for John Pryor, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. And Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no hands raised. You may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Whereas John Pryor lived a full life, often remiss in about his younger years in New Orleans, he joined the armed forces in World War II and was one of the last veterans residing in the Bellhaven community. And whereas after completing his tour of duty, John Pryor moved to Chicago, Illinois, where he studied art and photography and became a fantastic photographer. And whereas John Pryor also liked to cook, and people like Louis Armstrong, Cap Callaway, to name a few, often showed up at his home for a delicious meal. John was a people person and loved by those around him. And whereas from Chicago, John Pryor made his way to Southern California, finally he found a place in Menlo Park during the early 60s and made that his home. He noticed SRI International was hiring for a photographer. He applied and was hired. He enjoyed photography and worked at SRI International until he retired. And whereas John Pryor was a member of a bonsai club for 35 years, often his plans took the top spot in competitions. And whereas John Pryor was involved in his community and became a member of the Bellhaven Neighborhood Association and the Police Advisory Board, he was committed to the community and worked to ensure rules and codes were followed and enforced. Now therefore it be it proclaimed that I, Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, thank you for your service to our community and the City of Menlo Park. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Pryor's niece, Nicole Chastain.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Nicole, if you'd like to unmute yourself and say a few words, you are more than welcome to at this time. Nicole, are you able to engage your microphone? One more opportunity. Looks like I've removed your mute. We have to click the microphone on your screen to engage that microphone. Okay. This time, it looks like there might be some difficulty unmuting that mic. But Nicole, if there's anything you wish to say, you can also use the question feature. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. You may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And just for clarity, it doesn't say it in the proclamation, but Mr. Pryor passed away late part of, I think, 2019. And so I was actually excited to speak with his niece because we tried to put together, actually Ms. Rose Bookerstaff put together the information that I read, but I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Pryor in some way. So thank you for attending the meeting. Moving on to our next agenda item, regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. First, I'd like to introduce our city clerk and business liaison, Ms. Judy Heron, to make the presentation on item D1.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. Just give me one moment to bring up the slideshow. So this is going to be a brief presentation, just kind of reviewing the closure of the Santa Cruz Avenue. We are going to start with a review of what the actions the City Council has taken up to date. So on June 19, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1070, which established Santa Cruz Avenue street closure and also initiated the temporary outdoor use permit program. On July 16, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1071, which modified that street closure, and it also allowed for personal services and fitness studios to be eligible uses. The September 8 City Council meeting, City Council adopted ordinance number 1072, which again modified the Santa Cruz Avenue street closure, and it also allowed the use of a closed travel lane on the weekends. It extended the temporary outdoor use permit from February of 2021, and City Council also directed staff to return with bicycle routing options at a future meeting. Our next slide here is the proposed action for this evening. So staff is asking that the City Council adopt ordinance number 1073, which is, which contains the direction that was provided by City Council at the September 22 meeting. Those changes include installation of walk your bike signs and the use of the travel lanes without the time limitations. There were no changes to the street closure configuration or change to the end of the permit program. And staff was asked to implement these changes by mid-October. Lastly, the City Council is asked to consider a partial closure of Ryan's Lane between Crane Street and Escondido Lane. This table shows an up-to-date temporary outdoor use permit applications. That's broken down by use and whether it is located in the downtown core or outside of that downtown core and the number that are approved. As the newly appointed business liaison, I am working with those who have currently submitted applications and are still pending. So I'm working with each individual business to get that to be approved status. These next couple of slides, we're going to show what was, what were the changes. Here we have a call out for Doyle Street. You can see that over here to include that walk your bike sign. And then we did remove the area that was closed for the time restrictions on the weekend. So if you look on your left over here, this has been removed, and on the right, the install your walk your bike sign has been included. On this slide, there are no changes. However, did want to give the City Council a visual of that Ryan's Lane for consideration of closure between Crane and Escondido. And on this slide, there are the installation of the walk your bike signs here on Evelyn Street as well as on Crane. So again, on the right side, we're looking at Crane and Evelyn for the installation of the walk your bike signs. And that does conclude my presentation. And myself, as well as Deputy City Manager Justin Murphy and Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, for the presentation. At this time, let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our current item, which is item D1, consider modifications to the downtown street closure and temporary outdoor use permit pilot program and adopt urgency ordinance number 1073. Please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council at this time. So again, if you could use the hand feature in the top right side of your screen, that will alert us that you have a public comment. And at this time, I am seeing no hands raised. Mayor Taylor, if you'd like to continue, you may.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Are there any clarifying questions for staff from the council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I was wondering how the walk your bike signs are going to be posted, and just wanted to confirm that it would not be a new post in the sidewalk.
Good evening, councilmembers. Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, great. So the walk your bike signs, what we're currently tracking is installing four of them on temporary A-frame barricades at the closures in each direction. So they would not be mounted on a pole or in the sidewalk at this point in time since the street closure is temporary in nature.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I have a follow-up question, Ms. Nagaya, and this is about signage near Starbucks where the, where there is a barrier, and there's been some concern just about cars driving from the right side of the street from University to El Camino actually going on the left side because the signage isn't clear. So I'm not sure if you know, if you know what I'm referring to.
So thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'm familiar with that spot, but that's the first time I've heard that feedback about motor vehicle traffic. We've observed it for bicyclists. We had talked about that in one of your prior meetings, but we can, we can take a look and see if there's signage that we could install to make it clear, clearer that you should not be entering the wrong way.
The other thing that I noticed in that area is that pedestrians are using the walkway in between Chase and the hair salon and walking directly straight across the street going to Bistro Vita. So, and because there's no crosswalk there, and then also they have to step up to go across the median. So just thinking about safety, I don't know, encouraging people to use the crosswalks as opposed to crossing the street in the middle of the block. But having one side of the street closed encourages people to head towards that way, to whatever is there. And so just something around signage, I think, needs to be just a little bit more clear, encouraging people to use the crosswalk along with encouraging people to walk their bikes when they're downtown as opposed to trying to use Santa Cruz Avenue as a straight way to get to El Camino.
Yeah, thank you for sharing. Yeah, we can definitely look at posting an A-frame barricade with directional signage pointing people to the crosswalks where you come through that plaza walkway at Chase. So we can do that.
And I'm not sure if that's happening down the street, actually visit more closer up towards El Camino, but I'm not sure if it, if the same impact is happening at the next intersection where the one side of the street is blocked and the other side is open.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at the other block as well. I think that pass through at the Chase Bank is the only place on Santa Cruz where there's a walkway from a parking plaza in the rear that's not on a public street with crosswalks already at intersections, but we can verify if there's other places for signage that are needed and take a look at that. Thank you.
Okay. And considering we didn't get any public comment, which I'm actually really surprised, I'm not sure if everyone on council had an opportunity to look at the letters that were submitted on CCN. Because I wasn't sure, Ms. Heron, if they were attached to our agenda.
So CCINs are not attached to the agenda as public comment. The only ones that are, are the ones that are submitted via the web form. However, we did have one hand raised. It might have been either during the presentation or during Nikki's response. So if you'd like, I can invite that commenter to speak now.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So our first public commenter is Sandra Ferrer. Sandra, if you'd like to address the City Council at this time, you may.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor, City Council, thank you very much for letting me speak this evening, and I'm sorry, it was a technical difficulty on my side. When the screen flipped, the raise your hand went away, and I couldn't get to it fast enough. So thanks for letting me back on. So first, I want to say thank you for letting me speak this evening. My husband has owned Carpaccio since 1988, so over 30 years. And we've been a big part of this community during that entire time. Many birthdays, anniversaries, weddings, graduations, dinners, memorial dinners, and other celebrations have been held at our little Carpaccio. We've also made substantial investments in our restaurant and, of course, paid taxes. So our staff and our customers and our community, very, very important to us, and we're working hard to keep Carpaccio alive. We want to remain relevant in our beautiful little city. March 16, our staff was reduced from 35 to four. We're now back up to nine with the outside dining that was just recently allowed to us, which is very limited at 25%. Our current staffing level is now at 25% of where we were in March and for many years prior to the COVID. Carpaccio is asking the city to be consistent in what was done on Santa Cruz Avenue and even prior to COVID and helping to create outside dining sustainable through the approaching inclement weather for both Carpaccio and Anne's Coffee Shop. If Anne's chooses to participate and share the space, we recognize that's a small little coffee shop and has all of the restaurants and eating establishments. Everyone's struggling, and if there's anything we can do to help Anne's and make this a shared space, we're willing to do that. We think it's important everyone can survive that possibly can. And what we're asking is that essentially that we're closing half of Ryan's Lane, which is beginning at Crane Street going down, and that's the space that's shared with Anne's and Carpaccio. And not only does this proposal replace the central revenue to Carpaccio from the outside dining that will be lost when the rainy weather is upon us, but also provides additional revenue to the city. Providing restaurants with the ability to operate outside in some manner is a win for both the restaurants and the city, and that's been clearly demonstrated by at least two of those restaurants on Santa Cruz. This proposal can be a win for Carpaccio, Anne's, and the city. What we envision the space to be is a draw for dining in Menlo Park. If we can turn the alley into an attractive dining space similar to what's being done in Europe, that would be pretty wonderful because these are very difficult times. We're asking the city to help us with the flooring and the canopy. Both Carpaccio and Anne's can benefit from this protected space, and if successful, can be used for years to come. I'm going to ask our loyal customers to go ahead and send emails to you to let you know how much support we have, trying to stay relevant in this area, and we hope that you'll look through that and see that there's many, many people in Menlo Park that would like to see Carpaccio remain. This is a much-needed revenue for Carpaccio through the foreseeable future until COVID is behind all of us. So appreciate your time and anything you can do to consider Carpaccio would be greatly appreciated. So again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sandra, for your comment. Mayor Taylor, that does conclude the hands that are raised at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Nikki, the owner of Anne's Coffee Shop and the owner of Carpaccio, and I met after a meeting of the business owners and the Chamber of Commerce, and Starla Jerome Robinson was there as well. We walked over, and Anne's expressed interest in sharing the space because Anne's is open during the day and not at night, and currently Carpaccio is open at night and not during the day. And both seemed very excited to work together and put up murals on the wall and lights and make it a nice place. I also wanted to do a shout out to Mr. Jerome Robinson and to friend Dean. For the meeting that I attended, I heard back from at least one business owner downtown that was thrilled with the meeting and thought it was really positive, and they look forward to the next meeting and getting together and, and working to support each other. It was, it was a very positive meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Are there any other follow-up questions on this item for staff or any other input from the council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I had, certainly in the staff report, there was nothing about paying for any of the amenities for Carpaccio's to make Ryan's Lane more hospitable to the tables and all, and I'm wondering if we have any estimates as to what that cost might be and what's involved there.
Ms. Nagaya, are you still available?
Yes, Mayor Taylor, thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have any information about the specific request. I think it may have come in through the, either the permit application for Anne's and Carpaccio, which we would need to follow up on specifically, but we can, we can take a look at that, but I don't have any further information tonight about what specifically they're requesting.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Just following up on that, if you could, Ms. Nagaya, can you detail for us the assistance that the city has provided to other businesses? My understanding is it's been limited to the K rails, right? Has there been some other expenditures on the part of the city in helping businesses sort of prepare outdoor space?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. So our, the extent of the city's assistance for businesses has been the placement of barricades. We've procured the barricades and placed them around, the areas have been approved for temporary outdoor seating permits. That includes some concrete K rail, some water-filled K rail, and some concrete planters as well that have also been planted with shrubs and flowers and trees and things like that. And then we've also supplied the additional planting material along Santa Cruz to help with some of the aesthetic concerns that we have heard in the last couple of meetings. But no, no canopies or flooring have been provided to other businesses at this point in time, so this would be the first request for that help.
And just following up, would it be your understanding, and feel free to defer to the city manager, that any sort of, anything provided by the city outside of what you have listed would be something that would come before council, right before, before those expenditures were made?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I think the direction that we had from the council, we had a budget that was allocated for this work, but with specific directions to help with the plantings and the barricades. So I think anything else, we would, we would be seeking council direction to approve that.
Councilmember Carlton?
So previously with companies like, restaurants like Roma, the, I'm blanking on the name. I want to say Heritage, the furniture store in between Left Bank, and we did Left Bank, and a lot of the different restaurants, actually all of them that have the outdoor permanent facilities, we did a cost-sharing program. So all of them have received some funding with the city through that previous program that we had. It's not notarized, and I was just throwing it out there for something to think about for when it does come back, that we could consider a cost-sharing program for these two restaurants as we've offered to all the other restaurants. But we don't know how long, we don't know what the budget even is or what they're even requesting at this point. So I was just throwing that out there for food for thought for the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So the other restaurants, that was part of the pilot program that was five years ago. That's, I don't believe anything's been done, certainly in the time that I've been on council.
There was a pilot program, and then it went well, so it was opened up to the other restaurants after that, but I don't think we have done anything in the past two years, no. But there was, I think, two different levels. I don't think it was three, but there were two different rounds of asking for proposals from restaurants or other businesses.
Does anyone on council want some? Thank you, Ms. Starla Jerome. I was just going to ask for clarity on that. Thank you.
Okay. I think that there was a program that we operated a few years ago and through our economic development division, Division One, one person, one and a half people. So we could be, we'd be glad to pull up the staff reports and review them and let you know what, you know, what the share was and what would be reasonable and to get estimates if that's useful to the City Council. But we would have, we would need to come back with that information and to get more explicit pricing about what Carpaccio is proposing.
Go ahead, Betsy. I'm not thrilled about spending a whole lot of money, to be honest with you. However, one of the owners was talking about a point of equity and that it was offered to a lot of the other restaurants, and, you know, they didn't apply at the time, but also things, it was a different world back then as well, even a year ago. So if it's, if it's not a lot of money, I would like to know and consider that. I just, it's hard to make a decision one way or the other when we really have no clue how much we're talking about or what we're talking about. So I would say that we take that as a separate issue and bring it back when we have more information.
And could we clarify what a lot of money would be? Is that under $25,000 and over $25,000? Is that under $25,000, over $25,000, over $15,000?
Oh, yeah, under, yeah.
Okay, okay. And I'm not sure Nikki had a chance to mention that the council, in terms of what the city's contributed, waived all fees, which are not insignificant during this period.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And we have two follow-up questions, one by Vice Mayor Combs and another by Councilmember Nash.
I mean, I'll just go, just like I, for me, the two programs are distinguishable. Certainly, there was the program that took over parking spots and erected sort of these concrete platforms in front of Bistro Vita and in front of Left Bank. It was very limited. To me, I think what is happening now and being proposed is different. And so my only suggestion is that, like, if there is something that's coming back regarding sort of the city contributing something more extensively than it has contributed with regards to Anne's and Carpatio, then I want to know, like, sort of how then that is made available to every other restaurant in downtown and how much that costs. Because then you do have a sense of, like, where's the equity? And I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, a restaurant saying like, well, five years ago, there was a specific program that I didn't opt into. And so, and they now have outdoor space. And now we're in a pandemic, and outdoor space is valuable. And so that's unequal. I'm not going to get into that debate. But if we are, if the city is going to play a more active role in providing some resources and money for restaurants building out this space, then we should very much be willing to provide it equally to all of the restaurants.
I actually am going to continue that line of thought. That's exactly where I was. And it seems that there are restaurants currently, I would, I don't believe, some of the restaurants currently have received any help such as Refuge. And is the one that immediately pops to mind. But there's also Cafe Zoe. And they have been investing their own money in this. And I think that at this point, to start to change the program, especially given the city's finances, is, I'm concerned about it. And I think as the city manager said, the fact that we're waiving the fees at this point is, and the city has been doing, essentially bending over backwards to help people to help with the applications and all, I think is what we should continue to do rather than to resurrect the program that was a pilot at a time when we didn't know how well this would work. And it obviously has worked well. It's been in place almost five years. And I personally hesitate to spend too much effort even going down that path. And I also, again, think that if it is offered, it would need to be offered citywide to other restaurants. And I just, I think that this could, it would be very hard to be able to budget for this, I believe.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I think that the money and funding issue is a separate issue that we can deal with later. Right now, I move that we approve the closure of that portion of the alleyway pending approval of the permits. They need to go through the correct processes for all the permitting.
Councilmember Nash?
Is it an appropriate time to raise some more questions? Or do I need to wait till someone, the motion's been made?
But you have the floor.
Yes.
Either way.
You have the floor.
After a motion, after a motion, we can discuss it or you can ask now, either way.
Sounds good. I have reached out to business and basically heard from a couple of people that there's a concern about the garbage trucks and about the trash in the back and access. So I'm wondering if someone has looked into that, if there's been any discussion about that. One concern was that we make, how do we prevent people from backing back up onto Chestnut Street? If they, just will we create some traffic hazards that way? And then also the trash cans?
Do you want me to answer or Judy? Judy and I went out and looked and we, there's an area, it's almost like a Y, where the trash can go through and pick up and also where things can be dropped off for the restaurants and the other businesses across this way so that nothing has to back up. It can go straight through this way. And the trash can be moved around to the back of the building where Carpatio is on the other side. I don't know if Judy wanted to say something as well since she was there and saw this. Or Nikki, I'm not sure which staff member.
What street is it?
Ryan.
Okay.
While we're waiting, I just, the concern is with the parking there, whether there's enough room for some of the trucks to navigate properly. Apparently, there was an accident back there fairly recently where a truck backed in or did something with a car. So I'm not trying to rain on this idea. I just want to go into it realistically.
There's a straight shot. You pull in here, you come around, you come that way. It's an easy enter and exit. Some of the problems that we've had, and I've shared this with our police chief Spiller, is that people are racing through the parking lots now because they can't get down Santa Cruz. And there have been car issues. And also, I was told that a person was nearly hit from someone racing through the parking lots. So potentially by blocking that off, it might make people slow down through there.
That would be great. I think the concern was the 90-degree turn to get from going on Ryan's Lane, off Chestnut, on Ryan's Lane, and then take the turn on to, I forget what the street's name, what the street is, but essentially to go out to the parking lot, Escondido. So it's the 90-degree turn from Ryan's Lane to Escondido and then out to the parking lot, whether all of that works logistically, just from a.
The garbage trucks are already turning and going down Escondido. And where the cutoff is, you see the little notch on Ryan's Lane. That's pretty much where the cutoff is. So it doesn't impede on that intersection. But I also leave it to staff that if they come back with anything, this is going to go through a permitting process. And if there are any issues that we don't foresee, I assume the staff will bring it back to us. That's why I put the proviso that we approve it pending the permit.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sorry, Mayor Taylor, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ms. Nagaya, go ahead.
So I was just going to reiterate that what Councilmember Carlton described, the garbage trucks are already traveling down Escondido and the section of Ryan's. It's on the top of the screen right now, from Escondido to Chestnut. I think we did identify the potential. There are existing garbage bins on Ryan's from Escondido to Crane that would potentially not be a nice aesthetic feature of dining in that section that we would need to coordinate with the adjacent businesses to potentially relocate. Presumably, that could be done by shifting them towards the top of the page closer to Escondido. So I think there's some options there. But I think that still needs to be worked out more specifically through our outreach with the business owners in that area.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. And I'm just looking at this diagram also to make sure that Discovery Shop, and I know that's where they have their drop-off area, that that works or that there's some workaround.
May?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So as Councilmember Carlton mentioned, we went down to the section of Santa Cruz Avenue during Friday of last week. And we did have an opportunity to speak to the Discovery Shop as well as the Bagel Street Cafe. On this diagram, you can kind of see this little cutout here. And this is really where the proposed closure would end, would be from Crane to this cutout. So that way, the Discovery Shop's drop-off in the rear of their building is not impeded. I did speak with the manager of the Discovery Shop, and there was support for the closure. I did also speak to Ken, the Bagel Street Cafe. I'm not sure if he's the owner or manager. And he was supportive of the closure as well. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that this is really where that cutoff would be. It wouldn't be closed all the way to Escondido. And so the businesses that are here, Bagel Street Cafe and Discovery Shop, would not be impacted too greatly by the closure.
Councilmember Nash, did you have a follow-up question for Ms. Heron?
I didn't realize that. I thought it was going all the way to Escondido. So that's very helpful to know that. And just, that segment is enough. They're happy with just having that one segment, I assume.
They, I wouldn't say they're delighted, but they've talked about a lot of workarounds and said they're happy to, everybody's pitching in to make sure that everybody else survives downtown, which, as I've said before, for me is inspiring to see that kind of camaraderie.
I have a question. Councilmember Nash, is your question on this same topic?
Go ahead.
Well, my question, Ms. Heron and Councilmember Carlton, you probably know the answer to this. But just showing us on the map where eight, what is it, 842 Santa Cruz Avenue. This happens to be the only email that I received about opening up the streets. And this is Ms. Beltramos, like where her location is. And since we don't have any numbers on here, any addresses. So, Ms. Heron, can you point on the map where their business is? Please?
Yes, can you just one moment to pull up Teresa's Antiques?
I believe they're right beside Bagel Street Cafe.
They're actually down by Roma and the next, the street.
Thank you.
The next block.
Thank you.
Apologize for the delay. We can see Teresa's Antiques right here.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
Of course. So this is University, this is Crane, and Teresa's Antiques is right here.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I just want to confirm that the motion is as what's recommended in the staff report, which is sort of consider all the modifications, right? Because I think, like Councilmember Carlton, you just mentioned the Ryan Street closure. But if that was what you meant, the more comprehensive motion, then I second it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And for the record, Councilmember Carlton, do you mind just restating your motion?
Your own.
Apologies. Is it more clear for me to read what is written? I move that we approve modifications to downtown street closures and temporary outdoor use permit pilot program, including the closure of Ryan, pending appropriate permits, and adopt urgency order 1073. Is that comprehensive enough?
Thank you. So I will restate it just for the record. This is a motion by Councilmember Carlton and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt urgency ordinance number 1073, including the closure of Ryan's Lane pending permits. That sum it up correct? Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion or questions from the city council before the roll call vote?
I believe Councilmember Nash.
Thank you very much. I actually have a friendly amendment to propose. And that is, all of us have, I believe, have received emails from Bistro Vita. And I believe what would be beneficial to Bistro Vita is to actually, watch it, let me go back. He has one original parklet permit, which now expires October 2021. He has a new permit that's part of the temporary parklet permits that expires February 2021. Ali is looking to, he sees a need to cover both paddios and so that customers can dine outside during the cold weather and the rain and all. So he's trying to get more certainty. And so my friendly amendment is for Bistro Vita to match the new parklet, the temporary parklet, to October 2021 so that he can have certainty with both his parklets together to October 2021.
Can I make a suggestion that what's good for the goose is good for the gander? I've actually been concerned that we might have cut it a little short as well, considering the rainy season doesn't just stop in February. Maybe all of the COVID temporary outdoor permits can be extended till, or extended for review, maybe May 1st. And that way, if there's anything, any problems, they're being reviewed and we can consider. My gut feeling is it'll probably be working fine and be extended. But that at least gives everyone a solid, a solid amount of time to reap the benefits of their investment in this. From my lips to God's ears, things be better in May. I have a feeling they won't, but I think May is a more reasonable time period. How do you feel about, or end of May? How do you feel about? I just feel like it is fair to everyone involved to give a little bit more time.
I would certainly support getting a little more time. I would like to see at least Bistro Vita get his two parklets extended so that the second parklet is at the same time as the first parklet, just so he can treat those both as one, as one combined area.
I don't like playing favorites with restaurants. I think it's more fair that he has a temporary permit like everyone else, and they should all be treated equally. And if you want to extend, want to extend the temporary ones out longer, that's fine.
Yeah, if I could chime in, I think I'm seen as more from Councilmember Carlton's perspective. They are two different things, right? And so I know for Ali, he sees them as the same and wants the same assurance. But one is particularly in response to the pandemic. And the other is part of the pilot program that we've talked about earlier, that has been going on for some years. And so I, to Councilmember Carlton's, I am very much supportive of extending it to May for everyone. Or if you want to extend it, whenever, it has to be for everyone with regards to those COVID or pandemic-related measures. I would only ask that if the staff could chime in as we're sort of extending this out to, I don't know, whatever, 2022, 2023, if they could just sort of chime in. But I am supportive of, if it's May, I'm supportive of that. Whatever, it has to be the same across the board. But again, like I said, I would just want staff to sort of, you know, have no objection to this extension.
That makes sense. That makes sense, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash, did you have a follow up before staff came on?
I did, actually. Thank you. And I totally agree that we should be treating everyone the same. I'm wondering if we can have an option then for restaurants that are interested to extend in some sort of a permanent, semi-permanent stage. In other words, with fees, whatever, to become, to let them match so that it's no longer the fee free, you know, the no fees temporary parklet, but somehow we would allow them to pay fees and become permanent parklet to October 2021.
I, I don't like talking about permanent right now because we don't know what's coming. That's, that's, that's a separate, that's a separate issue.
Well, permanent in the sense, that's probably the wrong word. A longer term rather than a temporary parklet, just to match what we've already approved for the other parklets, which is to October 21. In other words, that would be an extra five months and that there would be fees involved in that extension, perhaps?
Well, I'm just going to make, and I hate, I hate having these conversations publicly because it's, I, I don't like playing favorites, and I also don't like talking. It's, it's very awkward talking about certain things. I feel like we can't play favorites. And I realize Ali wants to have it till 2021, but I'm not going to vote for that. I think that it is, I'm completely happy extending it till May, June, whenever, for everyone, for, for the, the support of keeping our, our restaurants alive and, and moving forward. But no matter how it's couched, that's, I'm just not going to vote for 2021 for, for that. That's, doing things longer and, and doing specific things for specific businesses is a, is a slippery slope at this point. And that's why I'm saying, let's find something that works for staff, that works for, for the restaurants. And let's, let's be fair across the board to everyone.
I guess what I don't.
Will we still be getting a report out? I'm sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Nash. Will we still get a report out every 90 days? Not sure if that's a question for Ms. Heron, and I know Mr. Murphy came on to follow up on the question, I believe that Vice Mayor Combs had. So I just want to know if we're going to have the same 90 day check in that we started with several months ago? That's my question.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I may defer that to Justin Murphy. However, from my understanding is that the next review would be when schools return in session and more bike routing options would be required, and he would be presenting that. But again, Mr. Murphy can clarify whether it's every 90 days he'll be reviewing or if it's strictly on a case by case.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Murphy.
Would you like me to speak now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, great. So first, maybe I'll start with the 90 day inquiry. That, that timeframe was not in my head, so I'd have to double check the ordinance and can double check with others while, others may be able to check while I'm, I'm talking right now. But as Judy Heron just mentioned, we are going to be keeping track of the bicycle traffic as schools come back in session. So that, that's the next milestone that we're aware of. Otherwise, it would be, I think, one reason, if I'm recalling things correctly, when the council did look to extend the timeframe to February, that was to make sure that we also had an opportunity after the, the new year to be able to check in and report back to the council. So I think we were expecting, the school issue aside, I think we were expecting to report back to the council after the first of the year. So in regard to further extensions, I think in previous staff reports, because I think there's, we may be up to about 10 staff reports on this topic, I'm not sure. But in one of those, we did talk about the potential for a longer timeframe to even like next Labor Day for some of, some of the parklets. Because I think that's what Palo Alto decided to do with some of their parklets. Because they do have a couple of different locations, Downtown University Ave and California Ave. So I don't know the specifics, but I do know that they were looking to extend the parklets to next Labor Day to get through the summer. So one key consideration is the difference between the parklet that displaces a parking space versus anything to do with the road closures. So I, I would say that if the request is for further improvements or some potential extension for the parklets to extend to the spring, summer, next fall, I think all of those are workable from a staff perspective, whichever milestone the council chooses. I think it's the issue of anything tied to a roadway closure, use of a travel lane, that's a much more sensitive topic for people. So I would, in, in that regard, continue to keep the end of February timeframe for the remaining road closures and do a check in on that early next year. But if people are looking for more certainty for the parklets, whether it's May, summer, Labor Day, October, I think all, all of those options are workable for, from a staff perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Councilmember Carlton?
I, I think that what Mr. Murphy suggested is great. I'm completely happy if, if Councilmember Combs, Vice Mayor Combs takes it as a, agrees it as a friendly amendment, we can leave it till Labor Day. In terms of the parklet, with a review on the road closures in, in February, I think sounds reasonable to me, if that is okay with my colleagues.
I'm comfortable with that. The, the only question I've had that I have not asked is just about additional seating, a few suggestions just about having bench seating or additional seating outside somewhere, maybe in the park or somewhere, somewhere near the areas that have more eateries. Just a thought, I'm not sure if Ms. Heron or you, Councilmember Carlton, talked about that at all or if anyone shared their input while you were downtown a few days ago.
It, it didn't come up in conversation, but I believe we, we have another meeting with everyone planned in the not too distant future, so I'm sure that will, that might come up.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And if there isn't any, oh, Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I was just curious, is that part of the Economic Recovery Committee? So will that be both Councilmember Carlton and Mayor Taylor attending those meetings? Or is it something separate?
That was, that was, I think this meeting was organized by the, the chamber that I went to the other morning. But I assume that Mayor Taylor, now that we're kind of getting, moving on that, will come if she's available to the next one as well.
So I just want to say that I agree with Councilmember Carlton's assessment. It was the first meeting of a group that's calling itself the Downtown Alliance, and it's really focused on the downtown restaurants and merchants. And so, and we'll make sure that both members of the task force are, of our council members on the task force are invited to the next meeting.
Thank you for the clarity. It almost sounds like it was one meeting, but it was actually two. Welcome back, Ms. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just wanted to restate the motion would be friendly amendment. So we have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Carlton and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt ordinance number 1073, including the closure of Ryan's Lane pending permits and to extend the temporary outdoor use permit through Labor Day 2021, which would be September 6, 2021. Is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with Councilmember Mueller absent.
Thank you. The next item under regular business is item D2.
Thank you, Council, or Mayor Taylor, forgive me. As stated, the next item on the agenda is D2, Consider An Update On The Housing Innovation Fund And Confirm The Use Of Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study. This was continued from the September 15 City Council meeting. Following the staff presentation, the mayor will open this up to public comment. So at this time, for members of the public, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. And when the mayor does open public comment for this item, they will be taken in the order of receipt. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Planner, Kyle Perata, to introduce the item.
You? Okay, I think I'm on mute now. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council. I am Kyle Perata, Principal Planner, and I'll be giving a really brief introduction to the item to the council tonight. This, this is a follow up from an item that went before the City Council on August 11, where the council received a presentation on the findings of the Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study, which is part of the Facebook Campus Expansion Project Development Agreement, which was approved in 2016, just for reference. That presentation on August 11 was from the UC Berkeley research team, and it also included the student researchers from the Y Plan Group within UC Berkeley. The City Council at that meeting also received an informational item update from staff, which that update provided a background on the campus expansion project and the development agreement overall, but specifically also focused on the housing-related items in the development agreement. And the two in particular, one is 8.1.1, which is the Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study, which was the focus of the presentation from UC Berkeley on August 11. And then the subsequent item that follows the Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study, which is the Housing Innovation Fund, item 8.2.1 of the development agreement. So with this item tonight, staff has provided an update on the status of the Housing Innovation Fund and requesting confirmation that the Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study be utilized as part of future work on the housing element update. And so since August 11, City Council meeting, city staff and Facebook have continued to discuss the next steps for the implementation of the Housing Innovation Fund. And so just for reference, the Housing Innovation Fund is approximately $1.5 million that will fund near-term actions. And so those near-term actions would utilize the local supply and housing inventory study to identify some of the possible near-term actions that the Housing Innovation Fund could contribute to. Since the City Council meeting, Facebook has interviewed three nonprofits to manage the fund. And I was just informed today by Facebook's team that they have selected Philanthropic Ventures to administer the Housing Innovation Fund. So that's an update that is not in the staff report, that's before the City Council. Following that selection, the Oversight Board is anticipated to be selected by the end of October. And so the Oversight Board is in charge of determining the final distribution of the $1.5 million. And so a couple of next steps following the selection of the Oversight Board. The nonprofit, in this case, Philanthropic Ventures, would release a request for proposals that could be funded through the Housing Innovation Fund. And the timing of the RFP depends on the final selection and creation of the Oversight Board, but it could be released before the end of the year with funds potentially being distributed sometime in early 2021. The timing there is depending on a number of factors, though. And so the nonprofit, Philanthropic Ventures, would manage that RFP process, but the projects to be financed by the Housing Innovation Fund would be determined by the Oversight Board. And so that concludes staff's update of the Housing Innovation Fund. And just a reminder that staff's also looking for confirmation on using the Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study as part of the future work on the housing element update at tonight's meeting. So that concludes staff's updates and presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perata, for the presentation. And at this time, are there any follow up questions for staff from the council before we go to public comment? Okay. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, our first public commenter will be Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Hi, thank you. Two questions. The first one, I was just hoping that the, the presenter could restate what the relationship would be between the Oversight Board and the, the group managing the fund. I, I just missed that, so I was hoping he could restate that. The second question, I don't fully remember because the last time that this came up, it feels like a long time ago. What I seem to remember about the Oversight Board is that there, I feel like I remember that the, the council had some saying who was sitting on that board. And maybe, maybe I'm confusing with something else, but I'm just curious if we could have some more insight into the, the process of the, you know, picking who's on the Oversight Board and just making sure that, you know, relevant community members can be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for any public comments on item D2, which is regarding the Housing Innovation Fund and Housing Inventory And Local Supply Study. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And just a follow up, and, and Mr. Perata, if you can just come back to the meeting and just to restate the difference between the Oversight Board and then the organization that'll be managing the fund, just some clarity.
Sure, yes. So the Oversight, so the Philanthropic Ventures would actually just be the administration. So they provide the administrative support for the fund and for the Oversight Board themselves. So, you know, they would, they would be involved in helping to manage the process in terms of like the RFP and bringing the information forward to the board. But the board, the Oversight Board, would make those final selections. So they would be completely independent, the Oversight Board, from Philanthropic Ventures. What Philanthropic Ventures would do is really provide the administrative side of things for the Housing Innovation Fund here. And would you like me to answer the second question?
Please.
Sure. So the Oversight Board is made up of eight members. And so the City of Menlo Park's City Manager and the City of East Palo Alto's City Manager both appoint one member to that board, and then the six remaining seats are appointed by Facebook.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure where the, the misinformation that the council selects who is going to be on the advisory board. But I appreciate you clarifying that for Mr. Gallagher. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I, I had someone ask me about this, and the more I thought about it, the, the more I'm not sure how comfortable I am. This is part of a development agreement, which means this is mitigating some of the impacts of Facebook creating a lot of jobs in Menlo Park. And having gone through the housing element, that's, that's a very, very, very difficult, difficult process. And for the residents that don't know what that is, there has to be a balance between jobs and housing in cities for various and obvious reasons. And so when we create more jobs, we then get allocated more housing that's mandated from a group called ABAG. And that forces us legally to rezone areas for, for higher density houses. And they are more gentle with us when we actually show a sincere effort and results on producing more below-market housing at all levels. And we have a certain allocation for the different levels. This is part of a development agreement with Facebook that is impacting the numbers that we're going to get, the RENA numbers that we're going to get from ABAG. It just seems odd. It just seems odd, and I don't know how we got here. And it's only 1.5 million, which in the grand scheme of things is what it is. But Facebook is choosing three quarters of the people that determine how we use this. And they're seriously discussing using it in Redwood City as opposed to Menlo Park. Or East Palo Alto, I can kind of see because there's, there's at least some, some traffic impact there. But I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion with my, my council colleagues. I don't know how we got there, that Facebook is basically determining how that, how those funds get used. And I think that's fabulous if Facebook wants to give $1.5 million for, for housing in Redwood City. But I'm not terribly sure how that directly relates to our development agreement. And possibly they will do it in Menlo Park, but possibly they won't. And I don't know, it just all seems kind of odd to me. I was just going to throw that out.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Carlton. Ms. Silver?
Thank you. Good evening, council. So I just wanted to address two of the issues that Councilmember Carlton brought up. First is, how did we get here? The development agreement specifies that the advisory board will consist of eight people and that Facebook will have the right to appoint six of those eight. So that's something that is in the development agreement. We can't change that at this point. And to the extent you do want to give direction to change that, that aspect of the development agreement, I do want to point out that Vice Mayor Combs is participating in this discussion. So obviously, if you wanted to take that issue up, he wouldn't be able to participate in that. But going to the, to the more substantive issue that you raised with respect to these impacts or the funds going to address impacts in other cities. My understanding of this particular provision is that the housing impact study performed in connection with the analysis, the housing analysis performed for this project showed that there would be housing impacts in several different neighborhoods, not just Menlo Park. And so the intent of this provision was to mitigate those impacts, those regional impacts. And so the, the Y Plan study looks at three different areas that primarily will be impacted. And then to the extent, of course, the city's representative on this advisory board would, that's why we have a voice at the table, and our advisory board members certainly could advocate for additional housing or programs that would be focused in Menlo Park. So that's the structure of, of the agreement that was set up.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, for the, for the clarification. Are there any other questions from Ms. Silver while she's here? Okay, thank you. Are there any other follow up questions for Mr. Perata, Vice Mayor Combs?
No, I don't have follow up questions, so if someone has some, some clarifying questions, I'll let them go, go first.
Does anyone, Councilmember Nash?
I believe this is a clarifying question, but it's for the city manager. So I don't know if that's where Vice Mayor Combs was going.
Welcome back, Ms. Robinson. Well, I'm not sure if it's Vice Mayor Combs or Councilmember Nash that has, have a question.
I was going to defer to Vice Mayor Combs, although I'm happy to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question. I was, I was just going to make a comment. So if you have questions, please, please go.
Thank you. So I was wondering if you could give us an idea of who you are thinking of appointing to the Facebook, onto the Facebook board?
Well, I really can't because while I do have someone in mind, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to that person yet. So I wouldn't want this to be the way they found out.
Can you give us some clue as to whether you're thinking of staff, community, member, community member, elected official, any sort of hint about that?
I am thinking of a community member. I think if I could just expand on that. I, I mean, of course, I'd love to appoint one of the council members, but to be honest, I think we've had some experience where the council members' participation in a formal group has extended beyond their council member status, and that has created some, some awkwardness. And I'd like to avoid that. I think a community member, someone who's invested in the housing issues in our community is what I have in mind.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I don't know how much or where I'm allowed to talk. And so if I'm talking out of turn, then the city attorney, can please come on and correct me. I share Councilmember Carlton's concerns about this. This seems like theater, like the City of East Palo Alto and City of Menlo Park get two votes and Facebook gets like six votes or something. And it's like, why don't you just do what you want to do and not waste our time? Like not engage in this, this theater. I, again, this seems like this is embedded in the development agreement. I, I think it is, it's a bad agreement. I don't, you know, again, I don't see like, like the value of us participating in something like that. You know, obviously, at some point, it was approved by, by a council. But, but again, I don't, it just is very, very concerning for me that, that structure. And, and I just couldn't, you know, you know, see myself like voting to support something like that. Wherever I can vote, I don't know what I can vote on, what I can't vote on. But, you know, again, maybe there is something, it's, it's, obviously, it's embedded in the development agreement, and it's there, and, you know, you can't do anything about that. But at this moment tonight, I have my vote and my ability to express, you know, a degree of sort of discomfort, if not outrage. And, and, you know, the city engaging in the process of appointing one person to a board, that is going to be clearly stacked in favor of the outcomes of a specific stakeholder in that, in that whole process.
I actually have a follow up question to that for Ms. Silver. And, and that is, you stated earlier that we, we can't amend the development agreement. Is there a reason why, or is that just a fixed document that we can't touch at all as a council?
Oh, I, I thank you for that clarifying question. I, I didn't mean to imply that you could never amend the development agreement. I just meant that if you did want to give some direction to staff on that particular issue to look at amending that particular provision, that Vice, Vice Mayor Combs could not participate in that direction. So he couldn't, you know, he could not vote. So if you want to just take that one particular issue right now, and Councilmember or Vice Mayor Combs could recuse himself from that particular issue, and you could give some direction to staff on, on possible amendment, we'd be happy to do that. Or you could just defer that to another time and take up the other issues that, that are addressed in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, for clarifying. And in the interest of Councilmember Mueller not being here, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking that up at this time. But Councilmember Carlton brings a very valid point, and so, so does Vice Mayor Combs. Just moving forward, I would feel more comfortable if the, if Councilmember Mueller was here. So we will table this discussion for now. And so I was actually the one that was interested in bringing the Innovation Fund back for a few reasons. One is, it is great that we're going to have this information included in the 2022 housing element update. However, we have several EIRs that are in process now that I feel need to have updated information about housing as it's related to Menlo Park, specifically around the displacement. This study covers up until 2017, I believe. So there's still a three year period that we don't have any data. And I think it's very important to understand, not just who is being displaced or who is moving to Menlo Park, but also why is that a change of job, loss of job, what have you, whether the property they were living in was a rental and now it's being sold. But just looking at the dynamics around housing, I think it's extremely important for us to capture as much, as much data about our residents in Menlo Park and what they're facing, especially renters. So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this back. So I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Perata or not. But how can we include this data and also, also get more data between 2017 to 2020 and include it in the EIRs that we have that are already in process or in progress?
Sure, so that's a great question. So the EIRs that we are currently in process of analyzing projects for their environmental impact, they do include a population and housing component. We are doing housing needs assessment as part of all of those EIRs. So those will be current, you know, beyond 2017 in terms of looking at the data and understanding the project's potential impact on housing and housing needs in Menlo Park and the region as well. So then that will feed into the pop and housing topic areas for the EIR. So we will be doing specific housing needs assessments for all the projects that are currently under, under review for the EIRs. So there will be a little bit more newer data for those projects. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and I appreciate that. And I'm just, my big concern is that the longer we wait until the next study, my concern is not knowing how much more displacement is happening. And I believe the report stated that 45% of residents have lived in the Bellhaven neighborhood since 2010. How much has that changed in a 10 year period? So that 45%, are they still here? Have half of them gone or all of them gone? Just thinking about what we learned from the investment, disinvestment report in the Y, the Y Plan. So, and then also, I mean, what I like about the information is it gives us an opportunity as a council to really look at preservation policy in the City of Menlo Park when it comes to housing, which I believe was the intention behind the Preservation Fund from Facebook. We know that there's displacement happening, so we're putting these funds aside. That's my assumption. I wasn't a part of the development agreement process. But considering how long it's taken to get as far as we have, I appreciate it, but I'm just trying to figure out what more we can do policy wise because we are still continuing to lose residents. So that's why I'm asking how to, how to link those studies together. I don't know how many EIRs we have, but are they linked? Are they getting information from the same place? How current is it? I just saw that the Y Plan report was extremely robust. But I know that the housing needs assessment in the EIRs don't necessarily carry that information. So I just want to make sure that we have as much information as we can moving forward, and especially as a policymaker.
Sure, so if I could just respond to some of that, because I want to just clarify a few of my previous statements. They, I, I appreciate where you're going with the Y Plan study and the depth of it. The Housing Needs Assessments, I do want to make clear, are for the projects specifically. And so they're looking at those projects themselves and their potential impact. And so there, there is less of the data that you're seeing in the Y Plan in those housing assessments. So that, that's a good distinction to, to clarify here. We have provided the Y Plan to our consultants that are doing those housing needs assessments as part of their background information for them. But in terms of the actual studies themselves, they are focused more on the projects and the potential for those projects to impact housing or create new need for more housing in the area. So it's less about the community as a whole or the neighborhoods around the projects and more about the project's potential to affect housing.
Will any of the information, I saw both hands, just a moment. Mr. Perata, just a follow up question. So will any of the information include a comprehensive look at Menlo Park? Or is it just around the project? And that's more, I guess, the housing needs assessments or the EIRs?
Yeah, it looks at housing in Menlo Park. It's not by neighborhood specifically. It's going to look at the number of potential housing units that may be needed to accommodate potential job growth from the projects in Menlo Park, not just in a specific neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. And questions from Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Nash?
I'm happy to let Betsy go first.
Thank you. I just, since Housing Needs Assessment has come up again, I just want to again state that it would be really informative to, at some, be able to look at how accurately the potential impacts of these projects are on the, on our housing. And we are now, we will be looking at potential impacts. And we have an opportunity to, further down the road, look at what actually happened and to continuously improve this process of the housing needs assessment. And I would like to, you know, to somehow get that into the work plan or at least be thinking about that as we look at new housing needs assessments and the potential impacts, and then live through that cycle and see how accurate was it?
Councilmember Nash, just for clarity, was that a question for staff or just a statement for direction?
Statement for just direction, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I support Mayor Taylor's position on tabling this. And I don't know if you need a motion to table it or not, that's fine. I would say, kind of to Councilmember Nash and to Mayor Taylor's point, we don't want this to go on too long. We might be, in delaying the funds and delaying their use, we might also be delaying the good that they can do in our communities. And so I absolutely support tabling it, but I'd like to make sure it comes back at our next meeting so it doesn't get lost in the, the flow of, of work, just so that we make sure it does, the, the funds do get used in our, in our community, if, if that makes sense. So do you need a, do you need a motion or are we in agreement, Mayor Taylor?
I believe the item that was being tabled was a discussion around amending the development agreement. Tabling that until Councilmember Mueller was a part of the meeting. As far as direction with the Innovation Fund, if, if someone from staff can come back out and just talk us through this, this process, because just wanted to find out based on what Councilmember Carlton was just stating, I'm not sure how, how deep into a conversation that will end up because I actually have about six or seven other questions that I could actually provide you now, and then we can follow up later. But just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Carlton's question and concern.
So the, the funding for the Housing Innovation Fund is not, not subject to the discussion tonight. The information on the Housing Innovation Fund was really meant to be for background information on the next steps and, and how the DA, the development agreement was set up to utilize the information from the Y Plan study in the Housing Innovation Fund. The, Facebook is managing the next steps of that process. They are moving forward with the nonprofit to manage the fund or to administer the fund, excuse me. And then the city manager of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, along with Facebook, will be selecting their members for the oversight board. And that's anticipated to be about a month from now when the board will be selected. And then the RFP process moves forward. So that process is in motion. The information in front of the council tonight was for the update on the Housing Innovation Fund for the next steps, but then really looking for information on the Y Plan study and staff's recommendation to utilize. and staff's recommendation to utilize it in our Housing Element Update for the future work for the Housing Element Update.
Thank you for the clarity. Councilmember Carlton?
So really, this is a, an information item. Is that, is that correct?
It's a regular business item. We're certainly looking for the council's confirmation, which can be done through a vote about using the Y Plan study for the Housing Element work in the future. I think the council could also not provide that direction. That would be fine as well. And I think the attorney is-
What the advantages or disadvantages are of using that study, to be honest with you? Kind of to Mayor Taylor's point, I believe.
So I think staff's recommendation would be that it would be used as background information to help provide guidance for the Housing Element Update. Certainly understanding that the data, you know, may be a few years old at this point. There will be more work and more background research needed to upstart the Housing Element Update. But this could certainly be one tool that the staff would use to inform that Housing Element Update.
What I would like to see, Mr. Perata, is that we use the study in the upcoming Housing Needs Assessments Analysis or anything related to housing when it comes to an EIR. I would like it, to see it being used for anything related to housing because I think it was, it's comprehensive. It just needs to be updated. And you were stating earlier that that update would actually come from the EIR, the Housing Needs Assessment, if I'm using the correct terminology. I believe so. Housing Needs Analysis and Evaluation of Potential Displacement Impacts? Is that what it's referred to as?
So in terms of, for the support documents for the EIR, yeah, the Housing Needs Assessment, and we do, we do require that those assessments look at the potential for a project to impact or induce displacement as well. So there is a displacement component in those Housing Needs Assessments. That's a City of Menlo Park requirement. It's also, when we're alive in our settlement agreement with the city of East Palo Alto as well. But we have required that prior to that agreement.
Okay, and I'm looking at, there's a list of Kaiser Marston Reports, 2009, 2011, 2016, 2018, the Housing Commission's Comments for Connect Menlo General Plan, 2016, the Build EPA Comments on Connect Menlo General Plan, 2016, and then also the Population and Housing and Commonwealth Corporation Center Project, February 2014, and then the Current Housing Elements and Reports. And just thinking, looking at all of those, I'm not sure how much policy has been done with all the information that has been gathered there. And just my concern is that not enough is happening within a period of time where we know displacement is happening. So how do we use all of these different reports to create some type of preservation policy now? I'm not sure if that can come out of the Housing Innovation Fund, if that's going to be direction someplace. But I'm just giving you a frame of mind of where I'm coming from. Because we've done all these reports, but yet we haven't done any policy around them. And so I am working towards, and I'm hoping with the council to try to figure out what that would look like, what a preservation policy would look like now and not when the Housing Element Update is done for 2022. I'm just looking at how we can use this information now. So I'm not sure if that's going to come out of the Innovation Fund with the Advisory Board and what they decide what to do with the 1.5 million. But as Councilmember Carlton brought up, it's not, it's money, but it's not a lot of money. So I'm just looking at policy, what we can be doing with this information. So that's what my biggest concern is, is how we're using it, considering that we have, I don't know, eight or nine studies we've already done and there's been no policy that's been created from them. I know that was a whole lot. I would like to see the information being used now. That's what I would like to see. And how can we get there?
So Madam Mayor, if I could weigh in for just a minute. So I think that the, there are two aspects to this particular report. One is the data that was collected, the recognition that there is some potential for displacement given a big employer coming into town and developing. So there's, the data aspect is very important. And like you mentioned, it goes up to 2017. And, you know, we know that some of those activities that have been described in this report are continuing to happen and that there are continuing projects. And so we can expect-
So members of the city council, I'm going to ask Cara to maybe disengage her webcam and just engage her microphone at this time. See if we're able to hear you okay. So Cara, can you try to unmute yourself? It looks like your webcam is working.
Thank you. Sorry, I froze there for a moment. So what I, so as I was mentioning, that there are two different types of uses for this study. One was the data, and then the second is the policy framework. And there are some significant policies that were suggested in the study. And staff's recommendation at this point is to analyze and try to implement some of those policies in the housing element. As you mentioned, the housing element will not be adopted until 2022. And you may want to give direction to staff to start implementing some of the policies earlier. And there's, there's, there's no prohibition against you, against the council doing that. The council could certainly give direction to staff to begin some or all of the policies that have been identified in the Y Plan at an earlier stage than the housing element. That would be a resource issue and we'd have to, you know, come up with additional resources. But that's certainly within your purview tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. And to follow up on that, is that within the purview of the Innovation Fund? If this is a capacity issue for the city?
It certainly is, except that the Innovation Fund, as you mentioned, is, is only $1.5 million. And the Innovation Fund also is controlled by an eight-member group and the city only has one, you know, person on that group. So I think that there, there will be certainly some policies that will come out of the Innovation Fund that are consistent with the findings that are in the, in the report. But it will be more difficult for the city to exercise its priorities under that fund. Instead, it would be easier to do that through your own policymaking.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Nash?
Do we have any insight into the six members that Facebook will be assigning? And sort of what their backgrounds are, whether they're community members, Facebook members, how they are chosen? And also the fact that the populations studied were about 31% North Fair Oaks, 58% East Palo Alto, and 11% Bellhaven. Does that play into either who is appointed to the Oversight Board or what the recommendations will be coming out of the Philanthropic Ventures?
So those are good questions. So I think for the first one, you know, in Facebook, it's their sole discretion on who to appoint, whether that is a staff member at Facebook or employee at Facebook or a member of the community. But, so, and so we don't know that information and we won't until they appoint their members. But they certainly could appoint, you know, a mixture of employees and community members if they were interested. In terms of the percentage breakdown, the, ultimately, the Oversight Board would decide what items to fund and potentially the geographic location of those. So that would be really a question that the Oversight Board would consider, where the, where the funding goes and, you know, how it, how it is distributed between the three communities that were studied in the Y Plan study. That is really something that is in the control of the Oversight Board. And just to, to kind of reiterate, the Oversight Board would be independent of Philanthropic Ventures, who really is providing the admin support. I want to just stress that the Housing Innovation Fund is a separate fund group with its own eight-member Oversight Board that Philanthropic Ventures would not be a part of.
Thank you.
Are there any follow-up questions or comments from staff? And then, so I have a question for the council just based on what Ms. Silver said and thinking about, and I know that we have limited capacity about directing staff. It doesn't have to be at this moment, about bringing back some, I wouldn't even say all, but some recommendations based on the Y Plan study for policy for the council to consider.
Just a point of clarification. Are you talking about for us to consider in the near term or for us to consider as, as council moves forward into the housing element?
As the near term.
I thought it was, I thought it was something to consider for housing.
The, well, the staff wants us, right at this moment, to consider including this in the housing element. I'm asking the council to consider near term since the housing element is set to be completed in 2022. So I'm looking at now, since we don't have the data between 2017 and 2020. Councilmember Nash?
Perhaps that's something that we could ask of the Housing Commission.
I'm not really sure what you're asking. I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I completely understand what you're suggesting. Are you saying to update the Y Plan?
The, the Y Plan information can be updated. So the answer to that question is, is yes, so that we can capture 2017 to 2020 and then look at recommendations to what can be done. Because even though the housing element will be completed in 2022, that process still can be another couple of years. And I'm looking at the displacement that potentially can happen between now and whenever that process is completed. Councilmember Nash?
And my suggestion was around any recommendations coming out of the, out of the plan could be perhaps done by the Housing Commission, along with staff.
If our city manager could come out just to assist in this discussion and I guess consider what Councilmember Nash said as a suggestion to have the Housing Commission look at it?
Yes, of course. So I guess if I understand the approach you're proposing is to fill in the data between 2017 and 2020 and then ask the Housing Commission to review the recommendations in the study and make a proposal to the city council. I think, yes, I think it makes a lot of sense to have the Housing Commission weigh in. I'm not sure how long it would take and what the cost would be to get the additional data from 2017 to the present. And so I think we'd want to come back to you with a proposal on that.
Is it possible actually to reach out to Y Plan? Because I think they have some type of methodology that they use. So, and I don't know if it's software, but I believe that there is something in the study that gives suggestions, recommendations on how to gather more data.
Yes, we definitely can do that. That could be our first step.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And so to wrap up this item, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. So we will, we will reach out to them and find out, learn more about their methodology and then get an estimate from them or from others on what it, and timing, what it would cost to do the additional work and the timing of that additional work and bring it back. I think we understand the general concern about displacement.
Yes, thank you. And then, yes, that are related to, well, I won't go into the list, but there are a couple of things besides foreclosures, evictions. I mean, there's a list. And just wanted to also follow up with Vice Mayor Combs to see if you had any input suggestions on this.
No, I'm, so I'm just, if someone can clarify, what, what action are we taking here? If, if, if any? And is there something that, that staff needs us to take that we're not taking? And just, I just wanted some clarity, which, if that's, that's fine, but just if there is some action that staff was expecting us to take and we're not taking, I just want some clarity of what's the consequences of not taking that action? But then I don't know, so.
Okay, so, so let me try and then Kyle or others can step in and correct me if I'm wrong. I think the purpose of bringing the study back tonight was at the council's suggestion so that you would have an opportunity to have a discussion about the information in the study. And that based on our review of the study, we thought it would be valuable to use as background information in the upcoming Housing Element work that we're doing. So I think we would intend to do that. I doubt the council objects to that. So I think we would do that regardless. And then, in addition, tonight, I take that there is consensus for the staff to reach out to Y Plan in particular and then to others if needed to identify a cost to update the plan from 2017 to the present and what the timing of such an update would be.
Just some understanding, like, totally fine with that. Like, what would we use? What's the plan for this information outside of, like, sort of as background in connection with the housing element? Is there some other sort of vehicle or mechanism by which it would be used to inform policy outside of that?
Well, it would be, that would be, do you mind me replying?
No.
Okay, sorry about that. So the way I see it is that it would, it's helpful moving forward, not just with policy from the council, but also with the Housing Needs Assessments that are being done through the EIRs. They don't, they're not linked. But I just figured if we, the more information we have about our residents in Menlo Park, the better we can serve our residents in Menlo Park. So that's the intention.
And is there a way, like, on the data we have, totally fine. And you did say about, you did say that earlier in this discussion and I just forgot. And is there, there, is there a way to, like, have the studies that currently exist inform, you know, inform whether it's the EIRs and some of the other things that's going on without the additional data or starting that process? And then, you know, if, if it's not too challenging for the additional data to be made available? I'm just sort of saying that, like, I think there is, there's likelihood that the additional data would, would, will further prove some of the, the, the things we're sort of most concerned about. And so let's just accept that we're concerned about them. Let's, what if we take the, the position that the data is going to come back that, like, yeah, it's way worse than, than originally sort of envisioned? Like, sort of, and then what would our actions be on that? I mean, maybe we can just sort of act without this, I mean, or just start acting while we sort of engage in this debate about the additional, additional data. That, that's my, my only- That that's my my only concern, that, like, if there's something we can do now outside of the housing element usages, let's, let's, which I think is a good idea, let's, let's start that.
I agree.
Okay, so. I, and I guess, I, yeah, I also agree. I mean, you're, Councilmember Vice Mayor Combs, you're really, if I can restate it, saying, you know, it's not going to be better. It's almost certainly worse than it was three years ago. So let's just assume that and and work from that perspective. Is that right? Okay, and and so I think I would defer to Justin on how that would impact oh, there, any of the work we're doing on the EIRs. So, Justin?
Great. Let's see. So there's maybe a few different angles on this. And this kind of gets to what is most important for the council, given everything that's going on. So that's where this may bleed into your E1 item and other items, because there's truly a need to kind of understand the implication. So I would say if there's a desire to focus in on the currently being current EIRs and housing needs assessments underway, I would suggest that we come back and we focus in on that topic. Like, if the council wants to use the the findings from the Y Plan study and correlate that to what's going on with the housing needs assessments, I would say that in and of itself is a large project. And so if you, if the council wants to identify that as a as a large item to focus in on, that that's one. If it's focusing in, and I was just trying to pull up, I think the the Y Plan identifies groupings of recommendations under production, preservation, tenant protection, monitoring. And so I think there's about, if it's about 18 or so recommendations. I remember the mayor early on saying that we should focus on preservation. So if there's a desire to focus on the topic of preservation, come back with what those four recommendations were from the Y Plan study to Vice Mayor Combs's point. If if those recommendations resonate with the council, those are policy decisions that the council can decide if they want to pursue what the next steps would be based off those recommendations for what the city of Menlo Park does. So I'd say that would be a different bucket for us to try to move forward on both of those. Again, it depends on what the definition of near term is. We would have to reprioritize things. So I'm not sure if it's as part of your this item, your E1 item. I think on next week's agenda, we have first focusing on a update on council member, council priorities and work plan, how to fit that in. So just to kind of be able to make some progress on whatever issue is most important to the council on the topic of of housing, it would be important for us. I think one other thing to keep in mind is that the Housing Commission is working on its work plan. I think they've had one meeting, their second meeting's tomorrow. So that's supposed to be coming to the council at the end of October. So that that could be timely in terms of making sure that there's alignment across council, staff, commission, so that there's the adequate focus to be able to make progress on things. So I think it's a matter of breaking things down into smaller bite-sized pieces to be able to to move forward on. So if we try to push forward on everything, then we probably won't do anything. So I I think, like, as an example, if there's a focus on the housing needs assessments, that would be one. If it's a focus on the preservation recommendations from the Y Plan, that would be another. If it's a matter of collecting data, that that's a third item. So it's kind of a quick overview. Happy to follow up on any of those in more specificity.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. In fact, that was, that was perfect. That was perfect. Thank you. Was there any other questions that that council had for Mr. Murphy or for our city manager? No? Okay. Well, thank you. And so just for clarity, Ms. Heron, we don't need to vote. We've given some direction. And I know that an item, another item is on the agenda, item E1 or E2 that Mr. Murphy was referring to earlier.
And I will let Justin speak, because I was going to request some clarification on what the direction is on this item.
Great. So Mayor, would you like me to kind of touch, touch on that? Okay, so I would. Let's see. So I threw out a number of options, but we probably, it would be helpful for the council to weigh in a little bit on which way you'd like to head. So it's, again, I may need to rely on the city attorney in terms of how best to structure this based off the way the agenda is set up. So it's whether to try to bring closure under this agenda item. Another option would be to kind of continue the discussion in a way under E1. And we need to kind of maybe think about that. Or whether we bring it back at a future agenda item, either as part of the like, the work plan update that we talked about for next. So I think we need a little bit of direction on one of those three. And if I'm recalling correctly, we may, there may be a council meeting break for dinner soon. So that may be an opportunity for staff to also compare notes and check back in with the council. So I think we do need a little bit of guidance from the council in terms of next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I do realize that that some of this was not that it is, it's kind of shifting. And the other piece is just that since Councilmember Mueller isn't here, it would be great to to have him weigh in on it. So trying to move forward, Councilmember Carlton, do you have any suggestions? Do you think we should table it for now?
Well, it sounds like we're giving direction that they've asked for. I'm I'm not sure what was Justin suggesting, that that they they roll this together with E1 and come back with something more comprehensive for us?
I, my understanding.
Go ahead.
My understanding is, Mr. Murphy, that you wanted just a little bit more clarity from the council and then we can reconvene around item E1 after the dinner break.
Yes, that's definitely one possibility. Another option, if you would like, is you could take your break under this item, D2. We can come back and then you can confirm whether whether to spend a little bit more time under this D2 item or just transition to E1. So I think if you maybe, if the time is right to take, take the break, now may be the good time while you're still have at the tail end of D2. And then when you reconvene, how staff may be able to assist, whether to transition to E1 or continue, just follow up with some, even some of the direction that you were providing previously about some of the inquiries about reaching out to the Y Plan for more data, how much time. I mean, we could potentially do some of those things under the D2 direction. But if you're looking at it from a comprehensive perspective, that's where I think we need to transition to something else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Did anyone else, Vice Mayor Combs or Councilmember Nash, did you have any input on this item, suggestions? Because I would like to move on. Councilmember Nash?
I guess it seems to me that we should be looking at this as part of all the priorities and just sort of where we, what are our priorities across the city? And also, how does it affect staffing? And then as the piece of staffing is discussed, it also seems, where can we outsource? Where can we use, like, Y Plan, which is already up to speed on what we're doing in Menlo, or has a good background as to what we're doing? And so are there opportunities to outsource and save our limited staff resources for in other areas, depending what our budget looks like? Obviously, that's a decision as well for the budget.
I'm I'm comfortable with that. I don't, honestly, I don't want to come back to this item after our dinner break. I want to be done with this item and move forward. So and me, I'm trying to get there. I might need a little push, a few words, but I would like to move on. So. Vice Mayor Combs? Do you have a move-on suggestion? So that we can get to dinner?
I'm sorry. Maybe, maybe the city manager does.
Well, I would propose that the council adopt the staff's recommendation. And then in addition, you can ask us to reach out to Y Plan and get an idea of pricing and timing. And we'll report back to you on that at a later point, maybe as part of future council priorities.
That sounds great to me.
Ms. Heron, did you get all of that?
We're gonna see.
Okay.
So I will repeat Councilmember Carlton's motion, which is to adopt staff recommendations and then direct staff to reach out to the Y Plan for methodology, the additional time and cost to update the study, including 2017, 2020, and returns to City Council as a priority. If that sounds correct. Get a second or Councilmember Nash?
So I guess I would say that it would be a possible priority, because we will have to weigh what other priorities we would not be able to do. And then the only thing that I was wondering is, do we want to specify anything to the Housing Commission? Or we'll let staff talk to the Housing Commission about any discussions?
That would address Mr. Murphy's comment about making sure it's important that the council, the staff, and the commissioner are on the same page.
If I may, possibly when the Housing Commission brings their work plan to the council, then that would give you a good framework to talk about possibly adding other items to the work plan.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash, are you seconding the motion or you have another comment?
Going to, so the Housing Commission is meeting tomorrow night. And it seems as they're debating their work plan, it would be worthwhile telling them that there was some interest in having them look at the recommendations from the Y Plan and consider that as one of their work plan, you know, possibly as one of their work plan items. But I'd rather give that to them at this point, when they're debating their work plan, rather than do it after the fact and then have them have to move things around or add something.
If I just may make a comment, just based on Brown Act, it would be difficult to amend a regular agenda without the 72-hour notice to add an item to their agenda. So I'm not quite sure how we could get that as a discussion piece for the Housing Commission. And we can ask interim city attorney to come on to see if there's a way around that, but just from city clerk's world.
Can I just state that the Y Plan was on there, they they had a presentation and everything from the Y Plan, I think, two meetings ago. And so it wouldn't, I don't see it as adding something to their plan. It's just, and I believe this may already be on their on their radar screen as something for on the work plan, but I think it would not be actually adding an extra item. It would be a discussion within their work plan.
Ms. Silver, you're on mute.
Yes, I I agree with Councilmember Nash's analysis. And I I think many of the specific recommendations in the Y Plan are on the Housing Commission's radar, and it would be helpful for the council to give that indication to the Housing Commission that that the council is interested in pursuing some of those.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. And so, Ms. Heron, was that enough clarity?
I believe. So let me just update this motion. Okay, so I will restate the motion. And again, this was done by City Councilmember Carlton, is to adopt staff recommendation, reach out to the Y Plan for methodology, additional time and cost to update the study, including 2017, 2020, return to City Council as a possible priority, and request that the Housing Commission look at the Y Plan in conjunction with their work plan. That all sounds correct. I could have a second?
I'd be happy to second, but I just make it, look at the Y Plan recommendations in conjunction with their work plan. I'll be happy to second it. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Carlton and a second by City Councilmember Nash. Any further city council questions or discussions? Seeing none, I will call out Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller absent.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you all for this, for this great discussion. We are going to take a dinner break. When we come back, I actually am going to reorder an item. I'm going to bring item E2 first. We have a couple of public comments that has been waiting. So I will see you. It is 7:42. I will see you at 8:05. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And as a reminder, please disengage your webcams and your microphones and only engage your webcams when you return. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I'm here and for some reason my share my webcam is in thinking circle mode, but I'm here. I'll hopefully be through shortly. If not, I'll drop off and try to get back on.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So having all city council members return to our virtual day, Mayor Taylor may reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. We were taking an item out of order. So the next item that we will hear is item E2 and E3. And Ms. Heron, can you remind me who will be doing the presentation on this item? Is this Ms. Silver?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So initially, E2 would have been introduced by City Council member Mueller, having been absent today. I will ask that interim city attorney Kara Silver maybe come on and just give a little background on items E2 and E3 if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just making Kara still signed in, so just give you a few more seconds here. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, great. Thank you. We're trying to, Ms. Silver, they have dropped off the, off of the meeting here, but just as by way of introduction, so the council can open for public comment, the two items on the agenda this evening are, were requested by council, E2 was requested by council member Mueller, requesting that the council consider taking a position on Proposition 15. And then the E3 was requested by Mayor Taylor, requesting that the city council take position on Proposition 16, 17, and 18. So with that, staff has, as a council member request, staff has not done a tremendous amount of research on the items. There were some links provided and attachments in the staff report. But with that, perhaps the mayor may desire to open it up to questions from the council or public comments, and staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bicaros. I appreciate that introduction. And Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment at this time? On either E2 or E3?
Yes. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on either item E2 or E3 regarding considerations of propositions 15, 16, 17, and 18, I ask that you engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can address the city council this time. It looks like our first public commenter will be Tony Alexander. Tony, you're off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Again, this is a call for Tony Alexander. Tony, I'm going to move to the next public commenter, but I will return to you right there after. Our next public commenter is Jovan Agi. You're off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Yeah. Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jovan Agi. I appreciate the opportunity to present this evening and the allotted time. This convening is bringing back a lot of, a lot of bad memories for me. I had the pleasure of serving as senior advisor for former Sacramento mayor Kevin Johnson. We had many long council meetings on Tuesdays, and so I do not envy you all at all. But with that being said, I've most recently served in the capacity as deputy treasurer for the state of California and would like to just offer myself up as council if need be, in a pro bono capacity to help you all kind of navigate your housing conversation. I understand the dialogue that occurred. I spent the last two years developing the housing and economic development strategy for our current mayor Fiona Ma, and I think understanding the state context as it relates to the quintupling of fund-for-long-term housing tax credits will significantly aid in your conversation. So I just wanted to make myself available to you all for that as well. But getting to the topic of Proposition 16 very quickly to provide context, I currently am operating as founder of Sevi Consulting, which is a government affairs and real estate development consulting firm, and aiding on Proposition 16 as a regional coordinator here in Northern California. And so Proposition 16 simply is looking to reverse Proposition 209, which was passed in 1996, which eliminated affirmative action in the state of California. So what Prop 16 will essentially do is look to improve the employment, contracting, procurement, and educational opportunities for members of minority groups and women. Since the passage of Proposition 209, University of California college admission rates for Latino and Black students significantly decreased, businesses owned by people of color and women were negatively impacted. A 2015 report found that businesses owned by people of color and women have lost approximately $1 billion a year in lost contracting and procurement opportunities with state and local government. What will Prop 16 do? It essentially will combat systemic racism and structural inequality. It will better tackle discrimination against women and people of color in public education, employment, and contracting. It will provide public employment entities the choice of affirmative action to ensure all people from all communities are provided the opportunities and resources to succeed. And then lastly, I want to tackle a couple misconceptions about affirmative action. One myth that we continually hear is reinstating affirmative action will reintroduce quotas. Prop 16 will not do so. Second myth, the graduation rate of students of color increased because of the ban on affirmative action. But in fact, graduation rates have gone up for students of color, but they have gone up for all groups as a whole. And last myth we continually hear is affirmative action policies will discriminate against Asian, American, Pacific Islander students, when in fact, AAPI student admissions have not benefited from the ban on affirmative action. So I wanted to be brief and respect the time that you've allotted. So if you have any questions, I'll make myself available now and at any point in the future to answer any questions on this or housing that you may have down the road.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to return now to Tony Alexander. Tony, did you have a public comment on this item?
Yes, I did.
Right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is a council member and also mayor and vice mayor. My name is Tony Alexander, and I'm also one of the regional coordinators that's working on Yes on Prop 16. The first speaker just mentioned everything and did it very eloquently. And I just wanted to also just kind of say that yes, that Prop 16 would have reversed the current legal ban on equal opportunity policies affecting race and gender discrimination so that elected leaders such as yourself can have and design programs that provide good jobs, better wages, and access to great schools for all California. I just wanted to also just mention that, yes, he did talk about racial quotas, and that was a myth. And this is not about racial quotas. There are no quotas. In fact, quotas of any kind are federally illegal, and Proposition 16 would simply allow race and gender, along with many other considerations, be taken into account when reviewing public education, admissions, public employment, and public contracting opportunities. Again, the first speaker spoke eloquently about that, and I also have participated in many meetings, and I think that the information that both I and the speaker are giving you would be very supportive of asking you to have the council support Yes on 16. One of the other councils in the South Bay, San Jose, has also done that. The city of San Jose has supported, and their council also took a position of Yes on 16. So again, thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. And our final public commenter is Alex Melendez. Alex, you were off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Good evening, Menlo Park City Council. I hope you're all doing well. I'm Alex Melendez, digital organizer at the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Our mission is to work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality, affordable housing. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution endorsing Proposition 15, otherwise known as Schools and Communities First. For those who heard my comments this morning at the board supervisors meeting, I apologize. They're going to be the same. HLC has endorsed Prop 15 because we see it as crucial and a once-in-a-generation opportunity to reclaim funds for schools, for communities, and provide opportunities to develop affordable housing. HLC supports Prop 15 because we really see the potential for what these reclaimed funds could do. I want to get a little personal here. I live in San Bruno, and I've seen my city kind of fall by the wayside from a lack of funds. I've seen multiple cities in this county, school districts that have had failed parcel tax measures, and various other community aspects fall to the wayside because we just haven't had the proper funding to either develop affordable housing or all the other aspects that Prop 15 could support. And passing Prop 15 would go a long way to closing a lot of the gaps for cities, for school districts, and can really help communities start really addressing the critically-needed services like mine need. Then, you know, why taxes? Taxes are not a flashy thing, but I do know what they are in this aspect. Tax policy is the manifestation of our said values. Equitable tax policy like Prop 15 are the expression of equitable values. I want to see an equitable recovery for the city, school districts, and communities in San Mateo County, in Menlo Park, in my hometown, and it's time we support and give the tools for cities and communities to do so themselves. Please support the resolution. Please support Prop 15. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, I'm seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to the three public comment speakers this evening. And also, Ms. Silver, thank you for putting together the grid, the one pager for Prop 15, 16, 17, and 18. And council member Mueller is not here, but he made, wanted to have Prop 15 on. But I'll start with the three props propositions that I asked to be agendized. My intention is to help educate and inform and elevate on the propositions that I believe are related to access and inclusion. And so I see these three propositions as those reflecting that intention. And so initially, I wasn't asking for the council to necessarily say we would support these as a council and write letters. However, the more I hear about what benefits would come out of especially Prop 16, I will ask, I am asking that now. But my intentions again are basically to elevate and educate the three propositions that I believe are about access and inclusion. And that is my, my only comment on this item. So not sure if anyone else has a follow-up concern, question, direction? And I believe that there are the four questions that the staff ask with the council-initiated item, which is what I should be following at the moment. So I will look at that. Council member Nash?
Thank you. So I was actually going to ask, well, I have a couple of questions. What is, the first is, what exactly we're being asked to decide? And so it is going back to the four questions that were in the staff report. And is there going to be a presentation or is, shall I just read the questions so that the audience knows? Or do you want to do that?
Thank you, council member Nash. Sorry about that. Let's see here. So yes, consistent with the city council's procedure on council member requests, the city council this evening can, has the option of taking one of five actions for specific directions, and then one would be effectively not to take action, and the item would, based, would effectively die for lack of a second or a majority. So the first section would be for the city council to, to make So the first action would be for the City Council to make the legislative analysis and presentation and resolution development for any or all of the propositions that have been advanced, that have been brought forward by the council member and mayor. For us to return back as quickly as possible, set it as a high priority. Effectively, we would drop a good portion of anything that we're doing in order to turn this particular project around. And that's in recognition of the election being only one city or two city council meetings away. And with, I don't know about you, but my ballot arrived yesterday. We know that folks are beginning to vote now. So time would be of the essence. If this is a priority, that would be one direction the council could give. The second direction the council can provide is to send this item to an advisory body. I don't necessarily think that that's fully possible given the proximity to the election. But the request there would be for the advisory body to do their analysis and then return to the council with a recommendation or at the very minimum, an analysis of the pros and cons. The third option is for the council to ask the city, or to direct the city manager for staff to prepare a report as resources are available. Again, this may not necessarily be an option, given the proximity to the election. And then the final formal action would be to defer this to the goal sitting process. Again, not necessarily applicable in this case, given the proximity of the election. So all that can, all that said, really the decision for the council this evening is if a majority or if the council's desire is for us to prioritize the preparation of a formal staff report, including any analysis that the council would like to see and put that on an agenda as soon as possible. It's unlikely that that will be for the October 13th since that agenda packet gets published effectively. It's finalized tomorrow and I don't know that we'll be able to turn around the analysis and research necessary. So it would most likely be on the 27th, which is the next council meeting. Alternatively, if the council is comfortable with adopting, so for example, with Proposition 15, the Board of Supervisors took action and considered, or the Board of Supervisors considered a resolution today. And if the council is comfortable with that resolution, which I understand was forwarded by the city manager and city clerk this afternoon, you're comfortable with that resolution and we just need to tweak it just a bit, then we can put that on for the 13th of October. So those are the options for direction tonight. We're not asking the council to take a position. That's not, that isn't necessarily. Well, I mean, the council can, the agenda item is to discuss endorsement of Prop 15 on the November ballot. So you can discuss the endorsement and then give us direction on what information you'd like for us to return with in order for you to make a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Pagaros. Councilmember Nash and then Vice Mayor Combs.
Thank you. I was just wondering whether Councilmember Mueller gave instructions that either wanted us to proceed or to wait for him on this agenda item since he initiated it.
This could, I have not, I did not receive direction from Councilmember Mueller. I did not know that he wasn't feeling well and I hope he feels better soon. Clearly, the council can continue this to the 13th, if you like, for Proposition 15.
Vice Mayor Combs.
So just making sure I understand you correctly, Mr. Pagaros. The council can't take action tonight affirmatively endorsing either one of these propositions, can it? Could I make, could I make a motion to approve or no? The underlying sort of staff report and other things aren't in place for such a motion?
I would ask our interim city attorney for her opinion on that particular matter. It was agendized as discussion, it was agendized as a discussion of endorsement, which I propose is, I suppose is broad enough. And here's Ms. Silver.
Thank you. So I did review the agenda title and the materials of this item. And I think it is possible based on the record for you to simply take a position on this, on any one of the ballot measures. If you want to take that position through a formal adoption of a resolution, then what you would do is you would give us direction tonight and then we would bring it back on a consent item at your next meeting. However, if you just wanted to take a position tonight with no further resolution, then you could also do that just through a voice vote.
And then just sort of following up is, can someone provide me some history with regards to the Menlo Park City Council endorsing propositions? Is this something that is done regularly, sporadically or never? Can anyone speak to that history?
So I don't have any particular history with respect to Menlo Park, but it's very common for other cities to take positions on ballot measures that have some type of local interest and it's certainly permissible to do so. You can't spend public funds advocating for or against a ballot measure, but you can certainly just take a position in order to help educate the local residents about what their elected officials feel about a particular measure. And maybe, Nick, you have some historical knowledge on whether Menlo Park has taken positions in the past.
To the best, thank you, Ms. Silver. To the best of my recollection, at least in the past five years, I don't recall the City Council taking a position on a ballot measure. Of course, I did not, I haven't gone back and reviewed the record, but I don't recall that. However, the City Council does currently have a procedure that was approved. And of course, the council can change its procedure, its attachment A to Agenda Item E2. And it articulates the council's position and that was last adopted by the council in February of 2018. So some time ago. And however, that expressed that, that provides some framework from which to begin the discussion.
And then just one follow-up question, and I have comments, but I'll reserve it for for after others have asked their questions. Since there is no apparatus or process by which we sort of educate or publicize taking the stance, as I think the city attorney mentioned, are we relying on just one, what sort of news articles about it? Are then the actual sort of stakeholders or proponents with regards to these propositions? Then adding the city to a list of institutions or organizations that have supported that or supporting it? Is that sort of the value add, right? Since then, we're not necessarily, you know, putting this on the city website or sending out a newsletter in connection with it. We're in theory sort of relying on other parties to use this, to further advocate this. Is that correct or am I missing something?
That's certainly how other cities have used it. So for instance, today, when the County Board of Supervisors took a position on a couple of measures, that was publicized and community members were able to find out about it. And we would expect that in some campaign materials that that would be mentioned as well.
I think the mayor is having internet connectivity issues. If you are there, let us know.
I'm still here. Yes.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I think Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up?
No, not at this time. I do have comments, but I'll wait and see whether Councilmember Carlton or you have other comments first.
Well, my only comment on this, on this item, actually on all the propositions. One, I was glad to see that we do have a policy around it. Two, I think it's important for us to talk about whether or not, well, one, if this needs to be updated. Two, how comfortable are we endorsing a proposition just based on the questions that Vice Mayor Combs asked? And so for me, and the third is just that there is a lot of attention around Proposition 15, understandably so. I look at the other three as again, being about access and inclusion. It really isn't about the council supporting it. It's just about, to me, it's educating and informing the public and elevating the conversation about other propositions that I think are important. And I'm hoping that people vote on it, whether they vote yes or no, that people will vote and will vote the entire ballot. And so for me, that was the most important is just educating, informing the public and making sure that we're paying attention to everything on our ballots.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I mean, I love the idea of Prop 15. Propositions always make me a little bit nervous because unless they're written absolutely flawlessly, they can't be fixed. And a lot of what seems to be really obvious, fantastic legislation that goes through Sacramento, it's still. There are fix-it bills that come through to reword something, to clarify something, to put it through. And the difficulty with propositions is that once they're voted upon, they have to be voted upon again to change it all. So I always go through these deeply carefully to make sure that there's no unintended consequences. Saying all that, on Thursday, for those of you who are interested, I'm hosting a big panel for the League of California Cities on the importance of diversity, both on business boards, but also in municipality staff. I'm also advising a fantastic startup that is using TikTok, of all things, to get young people specifically targeting young women of color to register to vote. They've got many thousands of women or young people in general have registered to vote as a result of this fantastic startup's work. You know, all these resonate with me. And I do love us having these discussions. I get very worried about us taking positions on propositions. We haven't to date when I've been on council. The only thing I know that we've gotten involved in was a piece of state legislation that we actually initiated and got our local representative to put through for us, to my, to my knowledge. And I'm not saying I think these are fine bills. I would probably abstain just because it makes me really nervous taking a position on these when we haven't had like the full analysis and it's just not something usually, it can be a slippery slope. But I say abstain because I don't have a problem with them. I'm just not comfortable with myself from the council position, taking a position on them. And if anybody wants to hear more about the startup getting young people to vote, I'm happy to share all the information because I'm super proud of how great they're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
So I agree with what's been said. I think that while there's a lot of good in the propositions to have the council take a stand on it as a council, it does not make sense to me. And I certainly would vote against having staff spend resources, given our current constraints especially, to research these further. I think that basically, so I would also abstain from this vote. I also wanted to put out there that Measure RR, which is one that I had not put forward because I thought that we were, it was not, we were not doing council support, but our local Measure RR, which is a small eight cent sales tax to raise money for our Caltrain, would certainly be something that I would want to put up as, and make people aware of, that it's something I personally strongly support. So I guess. I would also abstain. I think that it's great to know more about these, but I do not think it's a place where the council should, should go.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And Vice Mayor Combs, did you have any additional input on this item?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Yeah, although we have two abstains, so it's pretty much that. I think again, like I share what's been said previously, but I appreciate that Mayor Taylor, I think you very much so brought up, you know, the, what is the issue here in that, you know, Mayor Mueller, excuse me, Councilmember Mueller put forward the proposal that we consider, you know, formally sort of endorsing Proposition 15. And you, I think rightly so, said, hey, well, there are other important propositions. And you said, what about 16, 17 and 18? Well, then even the propositions we're looking at right now are not the entirety of the propositions that we're going to be voting on. So then I think it becomes a question of, of one, like, are we going to, like, as a, as a sort of policy devote, you know, sessions of council to going through all of the propositions and providing our recommendations to them? And that again, takes up our time and staff time. And I'm not sure that the public is, is looking for our recommendation or that it's going to provide like a huge amount of value. And so in that sense, I, you know, would say that it's interesting to me that we have a policy in these situations, but I would be really hesitant to act as a council with any regularity. Just because I said, by the very act of acting, you're, we're making a decision that we think some propositions are more important than others. And then again, if we're devoting the time to review all propositions, then, then, then I think a lot of people, me included, would say we should have better things to do with our time. So, so those are, you know, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. And I'm not sure what we need to do next. Just thinking about the four items that Mr. Pagaros suggested as far as how to move forward, but if we're not moving forward, then what is the action item? No action?
So thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's not a motion to move forward, then it, it just dies. And as stipulated in the staff report, it is, since it doesn't have support of a majority of the City Council, it will, the item will not be considered further by staff or, and it will not return at a future date.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I just wonder if for future council member items, whether we should have any, well, I guess it's up to each of us if we are absent to say whether we would like to have something move forward or not. Because perhaps if Councilmember Mueller was here, he could have had something that convinced us one way or another. And just generally, if a council member is putting forward an item and then it doesn't go anywhere, it's, it's.
it's, it's, just, it is.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So, Mr. Figueroa, you were just about to say something.
Yes, I was trying to figure out the graceful way for me to turn off my camera and sort of, I think this is, I think that the council's moving on, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, we are going back to Item E1. Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. And thank you, everyone, for your input on that item. I am, Vice Mayor Combs, can I turn the meeting over to you? I am going to attempt to plug my, plug my computer into my internet directly. So I will turn things over to you, and I will hopefully be back in about two minutes.
Okay, that works. And by me, you mean me and the city clerk, because it's going to take both of us. So if I am correct, we're going to, is it D, you know, where are we at exactly?
We are going to be starting with Item E1, Refocus City Council 2020-21 Priorities and Direct Specific Land Use Planning Work, which was continued from the September 15 city council meeting. So at this time, following the staff presentation, either the vice mayor or the mayor will open it up to public comment. So for members of the public who wish to speak on Item E1, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. And when the public comment period does open, we'll be taken in the order received. Following that, I would like to reintroduce Assistant City Manager Nick Figueroa.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, members of the council. This, Vice Mayor and members of council, this item is, again, a council, city council-initiated request for consideration of the city council's annual priority or priority and work plan development process. This has been, this particular memo had been before the council previously. And I think that it's best for staff to hand it off to the requesting council member Nash and Mayor Taylor to walk the council through the request or recommendation for consideration this evening. And again, we have the same five options that were outlined for the previous agenda item.
Four options?
And the fifth is to not move forward.
Okay. I would request that we wait a minute for council, or for Mayor Taylor to show up, since she is co-sponsoring this.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Unfortunately, the hardwire plug that I have is the wrong one. So if you're comfortable with me proceeding and not being on camera, I'm just having a lot of internet connectivity issues here.
I think that works just fine, yes, if you're comfortable with that.
Yes, yes. And so, Councilmember Nash, do you want me to start off, or did you want to start off?
First, Judy, if you could pull up this slide. Thank you. And then, yes, Mayor Taylor, that would be great if you start off.
Thank you. And thank you, councilmembers, for being patient with this item. I know that it has been pulled at least once and continued once, and here we are. And in light of the several discussions we've had at council, and then also Councilmember Nash and I met with our city manager, deputy city manager, and our assistant community works, if I'm saying her title right, Ms. Deanna Chow. We met last week just to talk through what our intentions are with this request. And it appeared that we took off a, tried to take a huge chunk at one time, as opposed to taking things in smaller pieces. And so what you see up on the screen is a smaller piece, as opposed to trying to, you know, solve a pie. Here we are trying to deal with a piece of it. So instead of the request that you see in the staff report that's detailed around refocusing council priorities, it's more about, here's a small piece of the pie that we would like to get support from the council to be a part of our subcommittee request. Create a subcommittee. And one item that we would do now is look at an updated adopted amenities list. And this is specifically the community amenities list with the general plan, because the current list has items that have either been completed or they are part of the new proposed project with the MPCC project. Or those items have already been a part of a development agreement and they're done. So to say all of that, the, we believe that the list needs to be updated. There were a few questions that we asked staff prior to today's council meeting. However, we need to follow up to get the answers to those. But that's one piece. And then, Councilmember Nash, if you want to talk about the second piece?
Sure. And the second piece is really getting an inventory citywide of the development. And this is something that's been done but is not up to date. It's been done for Connect Menlo, and I believe the last update was in November 2019. And it's been done for the specific downtown specific plan. And again, it is not up to date. And so it's really trying to pull together a list that will be, just have an inventory of what's going on with the city, the development citywide. And in fact, when we spoke with city manager Starla Jerome Robinson, it turns out staff is already working on this and apparently is very close, and actually with a GIS system. So we'll actually, it sounds like a wonderful system. We would love to just work with staff and, or perhaps it doesn't even need any work. It'll just come forward. But we're really hoping that those two pieces, just trying to get a handle on what is going on with citywide development, where are we with the plans? And also then with, as Mayor Taylor said, with the amenities list. So it's trying to take those two small pieces first. And then in the future, Mayor Taylor, do you want to talk about the future? Oh, hi, by the way. Would you like to talk about the future, or do you want?
Not at this time. I just believe that, just after moving through the first part of our meeting, our prior meetings, and then just looking at staff capacity, council capacity, I just believe that, you know, smaller bites is better. And so it says on the paper what we're interested in doing in the future. That could be six months, it could be a year, just not sure. But we felt that the priority here is just looking at the adopted amenities list and updating it, since there are, I believe, 10 or 11 projects on the books now for Bayside, and they'll be selecting from that amenities list. And it's important that that list is current. So for me, that's, I would rather stick with the now on the screen as opposed to the future.
Perfect. And just, and the last time the amenities list was updated was actually with the Connect Menlo plan back in 2016. So it's, has not been updated officially since then. So that all the developers are using the one that came out with the Connect Menlo.
And so our request is to have a former, former subcommittee of Councilmember Nash and myself and look at the two items. The two items would be our scope. That's where we would start from. And we can even do, where, if you agree, we would actually do the updated amenities list, bring it back to the council for recommendation, and then you either say yes or no, and then, you know, move on to the next item. So trying to simplify things and still be productive.
Mr. Figueroa, can I take Councilmember Carlton's question first? Councilmember Carlton?
Sounds fair to me. I support this suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Figueroa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, to ensure that I understand what the council's considering right now.
Mr. Figueroa, your volume is extremely low.
There we go. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, just to confirm that I understand the direction that, or what is being asked of the council this evening, would be to, rather than what's in the staff report, that that all gets replaced with the request here to form a subcommittee and then to work on the amenities list. Is that correct understanding?
Yes. And the items that are in the staff report, for a lack of a better place, that they would be put kind of in a parking lot to look at at a later date. And then a lot, and something to, just to share, Councilmember Nash and I talked about this extensively, is that a lot of the requests that we made that's in the staff report are actually already being looked at by staff, and a lot of it coincided with one another. And so, which is why it made sense for us to get to where we are now. So, thank you.
So, if I may, just procedurally, if community development representative has any questions, now would probably be a great opportunity to ask those. Otherwise, to this interim city attorney, the question, my question would be, can the council form the subcommittee this evening? And with those, with the two charges that are under the now, under the now category here?
Thank you. Yes, that is fine to form the subcommittee. And then the motion would be to form the subcommittee to take on those two initiatives that are highlighted in the slide.
Thank you. And I do have confirmation from the deputy city manager that staff has no questions of the proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, and thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, much like Councilmember Carlton, I'm supportive of this. My question is, like, if we're looking at sort of the amenities list and updating it, why couldn't the council just sort of take action to engage in a process for updating the amenities list? Like, what's the sort of specific value add with regards to the subcommittee? Which I'm fine with, but I imagine, like, again, I don't know specifically, like, how you update amenities lists, but I imagine there's sort of community forms, right, and other ways in which you get sort of community engagement. That stuff is collected, analyzed by staff, and, you know, some list is made about what's, what is sort of reasonable, what's not. And then it's presented to the council. And so I'm just trying to see, like, again, totally supportive, supportive of the subcommittee or whatever route you want to go. I just want to make sure that if there is not a quicker way, that we can sort of get the amenities list updated, that, you know, making sure that, if it is, that we're availing ourselves of it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I appreciate your question. And the, one of the reasons why Councilmember Nash and I came to this conclusion is because we believe that it would be faster. If you look in the staff report, I believe it's Attachment E, the list is about two and a half pages, but it's a collaboration of the adopted amenities list. It is a recommendation with the District One Subcommittee from last year, and then a combination of some emails that I had sent to staff. And so it, to lack of a better word, there's a lot there. And that list can be condensed down a lot, Councilmember Nash and I believe. And then also, we were using the input from the, from public, not public comment, from community engagement. So the community engagement piece, we believe that we've already covered or has already been covered through the Connect Menlo process. So we're not looking to change anything, it's more of an update. If you look at the list, some items on there, the Bellhaven traffic calming, well, that's in progress and it'll be completed soon. So if a developer looked at the list, that's still on the list. So we're looking at how to condense the list down, considering the work that has already been done. And we figured the value added was that we had worked on it already and that the time, the timeframe to get it done is a lot quicker because we had already worked on it. So that's, that was why we were just asking to complete that. And Councilmember Nash has something to say. And please do not let me forget, we do have public comment.
I was just going to say, from reaching out to staff and especially to city manager Jerome Robinson, there was actually, they were welcoming the fact that we could actually go through it first and sort of do a first pass and call through it.
And does anyone mind if I go ahead and take public comment now? Ms. Heron, do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Agenda Item E1 regarding City Council 2020-21 Priorities and direct staff regarding land, specific land use and planning work, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You can address the city council at this time. I am seeing no hands raised. I did receive a comment on this item in the chat feature. I believe it was also attached to the agenda via the web form. It is from Luis Guzman. And I do see Luis in the audience. Luis, did you have, wanted to provide live public comment on this item? If you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Luis, did you want to address the city council?
Yes, you're in the park, City Council and staff.
Go right ahead.
I would like to know what are the planning to do to address the illegal dumping on your city borders, which affects neighborhood, neighboring cities, but seems to be left an address so far by Menlo Park. Here, here are a couple of examples on the Cavanaugh, Cavanaugh Way and University Avenue. In Menlo Park, several community cleanups have been organized by residents and neighbors. But at some point, Menlo Park needs to take action and actively address these problems. Kind of the question is, like, would you leave these sites unattended for months if they were on El Camino Real or in the Santa Cruz Avenue? So it would, I would like to know what the city of Menlo Park would do with these sites. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you're off mute. You'd like to address the city council at this time?
Hi, thank you. Excuse me. Yes, I have a comment that's not directly about land use. I just wanted to speak to one of the points included in the original staff report, which is reform policing. It sounds like that is not on our short-term agenda. I just wanted to reiterate that that is something that I personally am very interested in pursuing, in addition to the discussions that we had in the past couple of months about pursuing alternate opportunities for pursuing alternate opportunities for the Facebook funding for the CRT. Definitely supportive of of the plans to do some work on those land use priorities. But I personally would be very interested still in seeing us get back to to some of those discussions over the summer about reforming policing and spending those funds differently. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may be in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And to follow up on Mr. Guzman's comments, I did receive your email that was posted on CCN along with the photos. I am aware of the illegal dumping that's been going on for quite some time. And I know that it's a challenge in the city of Menlo Park in several areas. This Friday, Caltrans, along with the partnership with the community-based organizations, the City of Menlo Park, the Police Department, the Fire District, and also CHP will be doing a cleanup out at the encampment that's between Willow Road, University and Bayfront. And so there is an effort to do cleanup. It would be great when there's another community cleanup organized in East Palo Alto that is bordering Menlo Park, that you include community members or at least the city, so that there can be some advocacy to do something jointly on the same day. Your mayor and former mayor contacted me a few days ago about the cleanup and about what they saw. So I did inform them about the cleanup that's happening at the encampment. So something is being done. And in the future, it'd be great to collaborate with cleanup efforts. Dumping is increased unfortunately because more people, more people are home and more people are moving and there aren't facilities for people to just to go and put their trash. So unfortunately, people litter, unfortunately. So but something is being done. So I do appreciate you bringing that to our attention, but I just want you to know that action is being taken. And then for Mr. Gallagher, just going back to the original staff report on this item and the discussion around police reform, we did begin an effort for that. It is not off the table. Unfortunately, that process has been delayed. We do have an interim police chief and we are looking for his guidance, at least. I'm hoping that the council and I will be looking for his guidance on police reform. It is not off the table. And to address your questions around alternative opportunities for the CRT funds, the same thing for that. I'm confident, at least with the three councilmembers present, that that's still, you know, still a concern, a question. And so it's not off the table. It's not something we're doing at the moment, primarily because of staff capacity and also we had some, we just had some unfortunate incidences that needed to be addressed first. And so trying to prioritize things, but I just want you to know, it is not off the table. It's just not being dealt with in this moment. So thank you for both of your public comment and coming back to, and I didn't know if anyone had any questions or comments about the public comments. Councilmember Carlton?
For the past few years, I've participated in the League of California Cities Public Safety Legislative Committee. And I, it is open for any city council member who would like to to be appointed to that. And it's a wonderful committee because you begin to, you sit down at a conversation with 50 other city council members, former police chiefs, current police chiefs, and and discuss all the legislation that is or should be with regard to public safety in the state. So you have a chance to help craft state legislation, but also you have a chance to have input and help legislators make better laws that impact all of us before they become laws, before they they get handed down and we have to fix them. And it's it's educational. It's very empowering. And even if you're not on the committee, you can dial in this week and watch some of the the meetings. They meet four times a year and now it's all online. So you don't even have to go anywhere. So I was just going to let, the public can can also see these as as well as basically anyone can, but the city council members, you have to be, work for the city or be elected to to be on the board itself. So I was just going to to bring it to your attention that this, there, there's one on the environment, there's one on housing, there's one on public safety, all the different areas that impact our city, you can get involved in that state legislation. So I was just going to say that's one tool in the toolbox of these subjects as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just be responsive to to Mr. Gallagher. One, I would say that, again, yeah, this this, we certainly haven't abandoned that. And when this process kicks off, there will be deep public engagement. So it it hasn't been forgotten and 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 we do plan for like a a a really thorough civic discussion about about those those topics. I would also say that you should feel free and in the interim to to reach out to our interim city, or to our interim police chief with your ideas and your thoughts and any of of your observations, of course, you know, you can also email all of us, as I know you have in the past. But but just to let you know, yes, this is, it hasn't been forgotten. And and it is coming and we will, we will be involving the the public extensively in those discussions.
Thank you. And getting back to Item E1. And I am not sure, before I went to public comment, Mr. Bigarros, and I believe you asked for clarity and I just want to make sure that you received it.
I'll get these, I'll get this headset right someday and then it'll be time to go back to the council chamber. Fingers crossed, right? So, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I think if the council desires to make a motion to form a subcommittee on the, an update to the amenities list, which the understanding would be that the amenities list will be, will will start with the document that was provided in the staff report and attempt to refine that, removing projects that are, that are complete, returning to council with a recommendation for amendment. So that would be the subcommittee and it, and once that process is done, working with, working to identify existing, in the inventory of existing proposed and potential citywide development, which has, Councilmember Nash had mentioned earlier, staff is is very close to providing a GIS map that will begin to share some of that data.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm happy to to make a motion that we establish a council subcommittee of the mayor and councilmember Nash that will initially engage the city staff in connection with updating the amenities list as part of the the general plan update and and then also engaging staff on on ongoing work connected with an inventory for existing proposed and potential citywide development. I'd also add to that, not as an official part of the motion, but a, an appreciation to the mayor and councilmember Nash for their 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 flexibility with this. I have to admit, again, the first time this proposal came to us, my initial reaction was, there's a lot there. And so I I very much appreciate you guys going back and engaging staff and coming out with a solution that I think that there is, as you see, universal support for.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs.
So at this time, I do have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs to form a subcommittee and appoint City Councilmember Nash and Mayor Taylor to update the adopted amenities list to appropriately serve existing future residents as well as an inventory of existing proposed and potential citywide development of a mountain type and keep up to date. Do we have a second? A second by City Councilmember Nash. Any further City Council discussion or questions? Seeing none, I will call vote, Councilmember Carlton. Looks like City Councilmember Carlton did lose her connection. So if we can just postpone this vote for a couple of minutes while she logs back on. Really appreciate your patience. I'm still waiting for Councilmember Carlton to log back on to the meeting just to finish off. Um, Mayor Taylor, as we are still waiting for City Councilmember Carlton, did you want to look at the information item that we have today and see if there's any questions or comments on that?
Yes, and I did ask at the beginning of the meeting if any, any councilmember wanted to pull it and no one did. But in the interest of of waiting for Councilmember Carlton, does anyone on council have question on item, the informational item F1?
And we can also call for public comment while we look to see if there's questions or comments.
Okay, item F1 is an update on the city advisory body work plans. And Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item F1 regarding this update to the city advisory body work plan, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. You'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone. You can address the City Council at this time. No hands raised? Should I close public comment on this item?
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Um, Councilmember Nash, just looking at what was for the Housing Commission's work plan, you had made a recommendation to put the Y plan recommendation into the Housing Commission's work plan. Not to make things complicated at this hour, but is that, I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Bigarros, for Ms. Silver, or for a city manager? Is there a potential? I'm just looking for a yes or a no. Just, I'm not trying to make things complicated.
I've got the agenda somewhere on my desk and I'm looking for it, but perhaps they know.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the work plan in our, in our staff report. For the Housing Commission? Yes, Mr. Bigarros.
Madam Mayor, the, it's my understanding that, well, Housing Commission has a meeting tomorrow evening to talk about their work plan. And we do have council direction and and the staff liaison, Ms. Kaufman, will remind or will mention the council's direction that the Housing Commission look at the Y plan's recommendations and consider including those or or some work on those in the, in their next recommended work plan to the council.
So it would be added to the list that's in our staff report or would it be, they're a new list?
Just one second.
I think it would just be incorporated into their exist, into the work plan that they will be presenting to us if they feel that that's appropriate.
Yeah, so, correct. The, what's, what's on the, what's attached to the agenda packet is the Housing Commission's charter. And so in addition to the items that are on the charter, the work plan does have the opportunity for advisory bodies to recommend City Council consideration of things beyond their explicit, explicit purpose and duties. So that's the intent of the work plan is to, is to identify just the things above and beyond or what the commission feels that they can reasonably accomplish given the, given the items before them in any given year.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome back.
Sorry about that. My internet and the whole house just went down, so I had to call in on my phone.
Okay, so following up where we left off, we were voting on Item E1. And by roll, call, vote, I will start from the beginning. Say, Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
My apologies for the delay.
Thank you, Kat, and and thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. I enjoyed all of the input and the direction and and as always, I think we did a great job this evening and I, we will see one another on October 13th, next Tuesday.
Thank you to staff for all their hard work.
Yes, thank you, staff. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bye bye.